All right. We'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for February 22nd, 2025 at 6:34 PM. Do have a quorum. Old business, the Select Board Self-Evaluation and Goal Setting.
Which I have with me.
Woo-hoo.
Um. So as a group, we rated ourselves. I'll quickly go through this attendance, reading materials, contributing to discussions, following parliamentary procedure, seeking community input, meeting with community members, reading and responding to emails, participate in opportunities to learn about town governments and best practice, contacting committees, which we are the liaison to, suggesting topics of discussion at select board meetings, presenting possible solutions, resolutions, following through on tasks in a timely manner. So I tabulated the results and the areas that we self-reported out as overall strengths, attending meetings, contributing to discussions, seeking community input, and were what we felt we were best at. The three areas where we felt perhaps we could use the most improvement is participating in opportunities to learn about town governance and best practices. That would be attending workshops, things of that nature, being in contact with the committees that we are liaison to, and suggesting topics of discussion for select board meetings. So I would propose that we decide as a board the areas that we really want to focus improvement on, and then we all know any particular areas that we should work on personally, and then perhaps we set a schedule of reevaluation, whether it's quarterly or biannual, no, biannually, the other two years. Semi in twice a year.
Twice a year, yeah.
Twice yearly. Whatever people feel the best, and then if we go back and evaluate and look for growth. But overall, I think the reflection on this is that the board members attend, communicate, work well together, maintain professionalism, and seek input from community members. It can be hard to work with committees that either nonexistent or committees that don't have a quorum and therefore don't meet. So I recognize that could be a hard one to improve on if you're assigned to committees that are not currently in operation. So didn't know at some point, and maybe after the election of a new member, we could shuffle up the committees that we're assigned to, so we get the opportunity to work with new people and experience new things. That's what I've got.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's not a lot of surprises on there, I don't think, pretty much.
It's still a good opportunity to reflect and think forward. I guess I'll make a motion that we revisit the self-evaluation criteria in the first meeting of March. Is that reasonable?
Yep.
Still reevaluate?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Delia I.
Peter I.
Sandra I.
Thank you.
I will hand this to you.
Thank you.
Good, you're welcome. Hold on to for comparison and marking.
All right. Old Church Planning, follow-up discussion, the scheduled Zoom meeting with Main Preservation. Oh, sorry.
So I just added this because a couple of meetings ago, you had asked me to reach out to Main Preservation, and I did, and I CC'd all of you. I've conversed a couple of times with, I can't remember her name. She works with Brad. Brad's back from his paternity leave, so I didn't know if any of you had had a chance to reach out to them as well to see if maybe a couple of you could sit in on a Zoom meeting with them and me just to discuss opportunities with the church or maybe get some history or whatever, as opposed to me just having a meeting with them and then trying to third-party it back to you.
Right.
So if you just want to check your email and maybe just read up on it, and then if you can make something work, great. If you can't, like I said, I'd like to have at least one, one member from the board.
Yeah. Yes, Sandra.
So having read those emails, I'm proposing maybe you and the folks from Main Preservation come up with two or three options that work for you and them. And then whichever of those most of us can attend, we'll go with that. Since it's mostly daytime.
Yeah.
Works for them. So maybe if there were a couple of options, let's come up with two different days and times, and then email those to us, and whichever one
Okay.
most of us are able to attend, we'll go with that.
Okay.
Yeah, if they needed to do it this week, like this email reflects, like I could make some time Thursday or Friday work. But we can also try to schedule one on a later date to give other people an opportunity to drop in as well.
Or we can choose one of those right now if that.
Well, I was supposed to get back to them on Friday, but then I kind of wanted to talk to you guys first.
Yeah.
In case it was missed, just to make sure, so I can follow up with them in the morning and.
I know as far as I'm concerned, like next week, anything but Monday.
Okay.
And anything the rest of this week, really.
Tuesday afternoon, not Tuesday afternoon next week. That would be a tough one. For me, just.
Well, plus we can't have too many of us there, because then we need to make it a.
Yeah, right. I can have two of you there without it being a quorum.
Um, yeah, since I am technically the old church liaison, I certainly wouldn't mind being one of the people.
What's your availability next week?
Um, kind of the same as Peter's. Monday doesn't work for me. But right now, I'm pretty open. My season is ending.
Okay.
And for folks listening, this is not a decision-making meeting. This is an informational meeting, and then that information gleaned from that will be brought back into the select board meeting.
Yeah, no decisions will be made.
Right. Yeah, Main Preservation has a ton of experience with this exact sort of thing, so we're just looking to hear what kind of what our options are, what things that they've seen historically, what possibilities they see fit for what we have going on here with the old church.
That was all. That's the only reason it was on the agenda, because I didn't want to forget about it.
Appreciate it.
The reasons.
Right. New business. Unless anyone minds, I'd like to make a motion that we move number four up to the top.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, Bob?
Delia I.
Peter I.
Sandra I.
All right. RC Garage and Auto Salvage Permit Renewal. This information is in there.
Nothing's changed, huh? Good, because that's what I told them. Unlike the recycling business we did for the one out on Hebron Road, this one has to be done every year. So every year he has to go through this so that he can get his state one approved.
Well, given that nothing has changed, and as far as we're aware, there are issues that need to be addressed, I would like to make a motion that we approve.
Yes, approve RC Garage and Auto Salvage's.
Approve the RC Garage and Auto Salvage Junkyard Permit Renewal.
I will second that.
Further discussion? Yes.
Can you include in your motion, if you want, to allow Bob to sign it, so I can notarize it and give him paperwork tonight? Because if not, nobody can notarize my signature.
Like, did I amend it even though it's been seconded?
Who seconded it?
Remove your second.
Yeah, I will remove my second.
And I will amend my motion that we approve RC Garage and Auto Salvage Junkyard Permit Renewal and allow Bob and I to sign on behalf of the Select Board.
I'll second that. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Delia I.
Peter I?
Sandra I.
Sign now.
You guys will still have to sign that one, though. That's the local one, the state one that only has one signature on it.
I don't need that.
All right. And I'm just gonna pass the hall once you get.
Name's on there.
Put it all aside? Put my notary stamp upside down. I'll be right back, Bob.
Okay.
Been a long wait.
You don't have any motorcycles over there, do you?
Yeah.
Ah, you know, who knows, right? I miss, I miss the salvage shop over at Lewiston that burned down. Yeah. That used to be fun. That I had lots of parts for my old Honda.
Is that the next little main off the over?
Yeah, main cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had a big warehouse, yeah, that's full.
Yep, Reggie, Reggie used to run it.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, take care.
Thank you. Good to see you.
All set?
Yep.
All right. Uh, new business, the consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Further discussion? Now, manager's report.
I'll go over it.
Yeah.
All right, where is it? There it is. All right, so one of the last meetings, Judy Berg had asked what the status was on the dam, so I reached out to Jean at Trout Unlimited, who currently has $28,000 in hand and has about $500,000 worth of grant applications pending for the project. They're targeting July 2026 for removal, contingent on funding awards permitting and related approvals. So everybody heard that the dam's being pulled out right now. It's not.
The municipal center window replacement, I know we got that grant funding way over a year ago.
It was tied up with historic preservation because of the age of the building. We finally get. And then once that's all set up in there, the vendor that we had originally gotten the quotes from was Anderson. And the conditional approval specific to those Anderson windows. So typically, I know we typically go out and do three bids and all that other stuff when we're, we're procuring stuff. However, because of the process it took to get here, Anderson's already one of the approved vendors on the, the main historic preservation's list of vendors, so they just need ROK to say that we're just going to go with a single source procurement for this project, which I think is in the best interest of this project, so that we can get it done hopefully this fall, probably next spring. So once everything's set up in LCP Tracker, I think that's what it's called, LCP Tracker, we'll get the go-ahead from Casey Zorn, and then we'll be able to move forward with the project. Heating, oil, and propane RFP. I didn't intentionally drag my feet on this one, but it got behind me, so that is open right now. I did send it off to a bunch of vendors, so that'll be due back on October 7th prior to our meeting to allow for you to open those bids. The 2024-2025 audit, I heard from RHR Smith, can schedule it onsite for October 14th and 15th to work on the most recent audit. And I've already, we got an uploading document, still client portal in preparation for this visit. We haven't gotten tax bills out yet. Normally, it's around the 15th of October. However, Manny and I want to start, Manny, myself, and Alyssa want to start working on those within the next week or so, and hopefully get those out a little earlier than usual. The Jim Jordan Estate, that was another one that people keep asking me about, so I spoke with the estate's attorney this month. The update I got was that the transfer of the property and funds is just being held up on the land survey, which I did request because it was in the will. They weren't originally going to do it, but it was in the will, so I asked them to do it. So being held up because of me.
Well, because you're honoring, following his wishes, and that's what we should do.
But they're anticipating that everything should be transferred to the town by the end of this year. And then Brock School Road and Paris Hill Road, I know a lot of residents have noticed that those roads are tore up and pretty rough right now. It needed to be done. I don't know if anybody saw the rocks that were coming out of that road, but they were huge, and there was a lot of them. So I'm glad that I had Public Works and Preston and the crew were able to get all of that out of the road, so that when we do the new surface, hopefully we won't have this problem again in the next year or two. I'd wrote in here that paving was supposed to begin in the next couple of weeks, but I see that the reclaimers are already up on Paris Hill. So I'm assuming probably next week, the week after, they're going to start working on those roads, so expect delays. But we won't have another winter for up roads that we have to drive over, so that'll be good. Other than that, that's, those are the things that we didn't have on our agenda that I figured I'd mentioned, so. Till next time.
Thank you. Yep, I saw them today, actually. They were up there.
Yeah.
Bikes was up there.
Good.
Yep. Uh, and then Brandon's been busy, I see.
Yeah, this was his August report. He had actually turned this in before the last meeting, but I didn't have time to add it. He had 33 calls in Buckfield for the month of August. 415.5 miles traveled. That's actually quite a bit for him. That was one of his higher months, but there's a lot of things going on. Two animals transported to the shelter, six animals returned to owners, three injured or sick animals evaluated or humanely euthanized, two active abandonment cases, including cats left behind after removed, multiple ongoing stray loose dog cases, including a multi-day search for Doug. And then he participated in Large Animal Emergency Rescue Parts One and Two. This is all available online, too, if people actually want to read the details about it.
Yep. Brandon's a busy guy. I don't think I've mentioned it before, but he helped us out once on a call.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I was thankful to have him.
Those at most of Oxford County.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're standing on the other side of a door, and there's a dog in there. Somebody needs help in there. All right, any further discussion?
Thank you, Brandon.
Yes. All right, all those in favor, Bob I?
Delia I.
Peter I?
Sandra I.
All right, approval of the minutes from the September 2nd, 2025 Select Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 Select Board Meeting.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Just one comment, and then number nine, the last motion. Is there, you made the motion, and she made the second. Oops. You made the second?
Yes.
I'll get that.
Thank you.
Oop.
Yes, sir.
Number 10 also says quick claim. I should say quit claim.
Yeah.
But we should withdraw the second and amend the motion with.
I will withdraw my second.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 Select Board Meeting with changes made.
I will second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, Bob I?
Delia I.
Peter I?
Stay in as I was knocking.
Peter I's are making progress here.
Were you locking on their door? Doors are unlocked.
They don't realize that.
This is an old school, but that was a bit ominous.
So we're just pausing while our manager greets some guests that.
Yep, customer service.
Something somewhere else in the building.
I'm going to go rate it.
You have a choreo, I think. Bob did a song and dance.
I didn't know you were such a good tap dancer.
These floors were great for it.
All right, number three, schedule a public hearing for a special town meeting warrant.
I thought that you guys had already done this, but I went back in the minutes, and I went back in the recording, and I couldn't find it, so.
Yeah, I thought we talked about it, but.
I must have imagined it. So you need it, I wrote it on here, you need it at least 10 days prior to the election, must be posted at least seven days prior to the hearing. I didn't write the dates on here. Well, the 30th would be too soon anyways. One of the other towns is doing theirs on the withdrawal question on the 30th, and the other one is on the 10th, I believe. October, no. I would recommend you do it in the third week of the month. I don't know the specific date, but I know it's that second week.
The 21st.
We could do it in conjunction or prior to our select board meeting, the third weekend, October.
That's what, 15 days before the election?
I will make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for special town meeting warrant on October 21st at
6:30.
6:30 with a select board meeting to follow.
I will second that motion.
Further discussion?
It may be a long night, depending on how many people show up to ask questions about the withdrawal.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That would be great.
You made the motion, right?
I made the motion.
All right, I'm going to second that.
Yep.
Is that what you did?
All those in favor, bye-bye.
Billy, aye.
Peteron.
Sandra, aye.
All right, number five, MMA official voting delegate for annual business meeting.
I move that we appoint Cameron Hinkley as Buckfield's voting delegate for the MMA official for the annual business meeting.
I will second.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor, bye-bye.
Billy, aye.
Peteron.
Sandra, aye.
Other business?
I have a topic for other business. Tomorrow night, there is a solid waste committee meeting. To the best of my knowledge, there are two conex boxes, one structure at the transfer station that previously housed the swap shop. And inasmuch as I support and celebrate the swap shop, the structure itself, by all accounts, is not safe, has mold issues, is not ADA compliant, and is a potential so what I want, huge liability for the taxpayers of Buckfield. Looking for discussion on this. I'd like to make a motion that we remove the currently empty structure from the transfer station, relieving the town of liability, and thus leaving it to the solid waste committee to chart the best course of action for the future of the swap shop.
I'll second that.
Great.
Further discussion?
Please.
Yeah, obviously, we can't have if there's liability risks there, it's unfortunate, but I'm not sure what else. Without going to the committee and making some other plan, I'm not sure what else we can do.
That what exists from all the research I've done and information I've collected from people who have been in there, people who have made proposals to try to fix it, people who have tried to fix it. Big one for me recently are people being concerned about the mold and their health. And then with the ADA comply, I just in today's world, all it will take is one lawsuit and what the town of Buckfield and the fact that we have that it has been discussed openly at the solid waste committee meetings, it's no secret that there are issues with, and I don't even know what to call it. Two partial conex boxes kind of connected with a piece that isn't structurally sound and pieces of the metal that need to be replaced and they're not connected and they're sinking into the ground and they're filled with mold and there are holes and there are rodents running free. And that folks who work at the swap shop, it's been months now trying to find ways to get this fixed or people to come in and there just aren't volunteers available and if this has nothing to do with pointing fingers and it has nothing to do is not wanting the swap shop because we I, for one, as a community member, want the swap shop. But I also do not want the town of Buckfield to have this legal.
There's been a lot, there's been a lot of talk, and I'll speak to this tomorrow at the meeting too. There's been a lot of talk and speculation and rumors about why the swap shop hasn't been opened and why nothing's been done with it. Well, this is being recorded. I'm the one that made the decision to close the swap shop. The transfer station property is owned by the town of Buckfield. The insurance is paid by the town of Buckfield. And some of the speculations about mold and stuff were the concerns. I think you saw the email. At that point, it was, I mean, for me, it was that, no, we're not reopening it in this structure. I mean, I've been over there. I wasn't around when they built it. They took two conex boxes, cut off the ends, stuffed them in the side of the building, stuffed insulation around it and expected it to house a swap shop. But it, unfortunately, a transfer station is prone to have rodents everywhere, right? Because there's garbage and they freely get in there and then they walk all over stuff that's being housed in that building and then, you know, you've got mouse and rat species and urine can carry diseases and people are taking that home with them. Like, there's just so many things wrong with the current structure that I personally do not believe that anybody from the public should be in that building. And I do agree with what Sandra's saying is that get rid of it, clean slate, have the volunteers come up with a plan, do some fundraising, see what we can put there that is safe, healthy, and not in the condition that that is. I mean, I think that was a a quick solution to something that everybody wanted and it's been, it's been there for years. And I just think now it's time that we move on from that building. But me personally, I don't want to open the town up to liability, to liabilities that that building inherently poses and so whoever thinks anybody else was the reason that it was closed, blame me. I just.
And I don't, I don't want to use the word blame because I think you, given all the information you have, made a wise choice looking to protect the safety and well-being.
Yep.
That that was the reason you made that choice. So it's nothing to do with not wanting the swap shop.
No.
Carry on. We wanted to carry on, but it needs to be done safely and I feel it needs to be done safely in a way that does not put the town of Buckfield at financial risk.
Yep.
I know this isn't the answer that a lot of us were looking for, myself included, because this is a valuable town resource that helps the least fortunate of us. And for that reason, of course, we want to keep it open, but we also have to think about the so far limited pool of volunteers and all of the dedicated work that they have put into it and keeping their safety and well-being at the forefront. It's really the least we can do considering all of their work is completely volunteer. Yeah, the least we can do is have a comfortable place for them to carry out that work and the swap shop is not that place in its current state. And that's not to say that this means a permanent end to the swap shop, but I hope that what this means is a reinvigorated effort by the community to get behind such an idea and find a new path forward.
That was well said.
Thank you.
We need to recognize the enormous amount of work that has been put into the swap shop over the years and embrace the intent and the mission and find the way to go forward safely and in a way that it can grow and flourish. Was running out of spaces?
Right. Exactly. And we had already patched on two extensions to the original structure and clearly those were not.
And they wanted another addition to it. I was like, yeah, there's no way. I mean, clean slate might give them something that's more usable and you know, there, there are solid waste grants out there that come out every year, you know, and having a swap shop and having this whole story about how we had a swap shop and it had to be closed because, you know, that's, that's a good proposal for seeking funds for a future swap shop. They're just.
It'll take work, but it's work worth doing. And I hope that the community members that I've seen speak out on this issue will join us in helping get some of that work done. On that note, I will address it in the meeting tomorrow. But I've been pretty disappointed to see the blame being tossed around and where it's been targeted. You know, I understand that for people, select board going-ons might fall on the back burner for them. And especially with the solid waste committee meetings not being like reliably open on Zoom and them occurring not as often, it makes it that much more difficult to keep up with. But I've seen specifically some comments about, you know, how veiled in mystery this whole process has been. And I kind of want to dispel that because the now former swap shop head coordinator that was working with us through this work was nothing but communicative and responsive. And even though those communications were not posted on a public forum, she has been the most reliable person in my inbox, other than Cameron sending me, you know, our select board draft meeting agendas every week. She has, you know, written me practically multiple essays about the work that she has put in, the ideas that she has and her desire to be there doing that. So I've, I've been really disappointed by that and I wish that if people had had questions, I can't speak to anyone else on the board, but I will say that if you've been attending these meetings and stuff, like I, it might be kind of apparent that it's me doing a lot of the communicating around the swap shop. And I don't have any emails in my inbox asking for information on the swap shop and what is happening. I only have emails from Sarah giving me practically religious updates on the work that she was doing in that swap shop. So to see people having an impression of the opposite is, I think, understandable, but I want people to know how disappointing it was for me to see that and then not see any communication in my own inbox regarding that point.
And, and I believe the emails that she sent to you, she also forwarded to every member on this board and also in Sumner, complete transparency. So if any member of the community had asked any select board member or town official in either town, all information was available at all times.
And in light of seeing that critique, I'm compiling just like a big Word document that I'll have printed out for tomorrow that show in chronological order, all of Sarah's updates on the swap shop while she was our coordinator. So thank you to Sarah for that hard work. I'm sorry that this hasn't panned out the way that I think many of us wanted it to. And then I'm sorry you faced some backlash from the community who was left feeling like they were in the dark.
Thank you for that.
Any further discussion?
So the motion was to remove the, remove the structures until we come up with a better plan, which we'll discuss tomorrow night.
Remove the structures and then leave it to the solid waste committee to identify what the path forward should be.
I personally would ask the board that we table such a vote for our next meeting to happen after the solid waste committee meets. Not that it will change much of anything, but it will give us a chance to discuss that specific agenda item at the meeting without people feeling like a decision was already made before they got a chance to show up.
So you would, yes.
I hear you. This was a difficult agenda item for me to bring up.
Yeah.
My concern with that is as a board representing the town, I mean, certainly we could go back and change something. I, I don't see how it could be an option to keep an unsafe mold-filled structure. I don't see how that could even be an option.
I, I absolutely agree. I just can see, I guess, optically how it would feel. I've heard that some people intend on showing up to the meeting tonight. And if I basically go to that meeting and I tell them the town of Buckfield has already decided to remove the structure, they'll feel like I'm shutting down the discussion that they want to have and I just don't want to do that. Like I said, I don't think it will change anything if we push this vote to the next meeting. I just don't want people to feel like I'm shutting them down in the meeting tomorrow night. I want to be able to explain to them and offer them the chance, maybe with a mask on, to peek into the swap shop sometime before the next Buckfield meeting, but
I wouldn't suggest anybody going there. The problem I, and, and I hear her, and if it waited till twenty-first, personally, it wouldn't matter because Public Works wouldn't have the time to tear that down anyways, right now. Where was I going with that? You get a lot of these volunteers in there looking at it and they all have strong opinions. This can be salvaged, this can be fixed, this is and it's, it doesn't solve the underlying issue of that building. And as far as, you know, the fact that it sat vacant for as long as it has now and there really hasn't been much in and out, other than when Sarah was moving stuff around, bringing the, anybody from the public into that building. I just, even with masks, it's just, I don't know.
I, I don't see in, in no way do I support the town of Buckfield carrying the liability of anything happening with what is there. And, and that's part of why I brought it up tonight because I the transfer station committee is about developing going forward, what needs to be done. But I, I'm not comfortable with there being any in this opportunity for the town of Buckfield to be liable. All it will take is one person to go in there and then say they're sick because of the mold that was in that building and what that will cost this town potentially. And, and I believe that there are people that are going to be at the meeting tomorrow night that have plans on how to work with those buildings. But that leaves the liability on the town of Buckfield, not on the solid waste committee, not on the town of Sumner, but the taxpayers of Buckfield.
And that's the kicker with this agreement is when we formed the transfer station, we maintained ownership of the property. It's not owned by Buckfield and Sumner. So it's Buckfield's property, it's Buckfield's insurance, it's Buckfield's liability. So if we were ever, if something were to happen, I would foresee that it would be Buckfield that would get
Yeah.
the brunt of.
But it could be everybody. They could sue the individuals on the solid waste committee for allowing, I mean, that could potentially happen, but ultimately, I
I think ultimately, the town of Buckfield has the most skin in the game on that aspect of it. And that's what concerned me.
Firstly, do I, do I need a vote tonight? That's what I'm looking for is to protect the town of Buckfield and just I feel strongly that using that structure for anything, not even storage, we should not, should not be on Buckfield property. That just can't be an option.
Right.
Tomorrow night. And it concerns me that it might be. And if, if other people feel that it should be an option. It might be, and if, if other people feel that it should be an option. This is a tough one.
Yeah, awful, obviously.
I, I can't see of any way or had any report from anybody that. That. Be salvaged as a safe public. Space.
Yeah, I just feel bad because I don't have any reports from anybody. My only reports have come from Sarah. Who seemed to think that working in that building, she had some hope for it. So. But my primary concern right now is just, you know, not wanting to deal with people who feel like I've taken their choice away at the meeting tomorrow night.
And it shouldn't be on you. That's the other piece.
No, it's on.
I think you've gone above and beyond trying to. Be the. The facilitator of all of this between volunteers and other volunteers and some volunteers that don't want to talk to other volunteers and. You know, just all the different dynamics of personality associated with the last two years of the swap shop. You know, as we talk about this building and we talk about the last two to three, three months now that it's been closed, there's been ample opportunity for. Any number of volunteers to go down there and take a look and, and you know, see what's going on and, and help. Try to be part of the solution and unfortunately, as I read through Sarah's. Correspondence, which was, I mean, some days it was three or four. There was very limited, if any. Support from volunteers. So. You know, getting into this point in time where. She's gotten some of the blame for it and it's like not even fair because, you know, she's done everything she possibly could. Above and beyond what I think any volunteer.
Absolutely.
In that role should have to do.
Yeah.
And then to come down and, and when I, you know, when we received that last message from her and I told her, I said. I'm just gonna shut it down at least until the swap shop meeting or the swap shop, that's what it's been, the solid waste committee meeting. And my intent was to go in there and say everything that I've said tonight. I don't feel the building safe. You know, we've. Had a few contractors go and look at it, had a few contractors help rip up some of the floor and then they're like, oh, we can just do this, this and this. All I'm hearing is a bunch of Band-Aids on bullet holes because you're never going to solve the problem. That water gets in there. It's got poor ventilation. You've got electric heat that. Was set on a timer to turn on before people were even in that building. I mean, it's, it's a.
Electric heat.
Yeah.
Meaning floor heaters.
Well, they have it mounted up on the wall or whatever, but e- either way, it unsupervised, you know what I mean with. God knows what in there. You've got clothes, you've got everything else. It's just. It's. I think it's just. Time to look for a new solution and. You know, unless whether you all make the decision tonight or you wait till the next meeting, it, it really doesn't matter. Because I feel like a lot of people had ample opportunity and did nothing. But speculate, complain. And just not help, you know what I mean? It takes a village to run something like this and unfortunately, the village hasn't been there.
And there have been many people in the village who are trying, but.
Yes, I'm not saying there, I'm, that's not what, yeah, I'm saying there's a lot of people.
Not what you're saying.
There's a lot of people that have shared great information with Azelia and myself and the board or the committee. And then that's usually where it stops.
Yeah.
There's a lot of talk, but there's not a lot of action when it comes to rectifying these issues and that's how we find ourselves here. So, I mean, we can. The solid waste meetings happen a lot, every four months, six months, however it works out, we're only, we're only required to have two a year. And that seems to be the only time that, you know, you get the group of people to talk about it and then, you know, somebody has, we tried. You, the last meeting, the one that I wasn't at, where you tried doing the different coordinators and getting it all to work out. I mean, that was well over a hundred and eighty days ago and look like, you know, I'm not shooting down what you guys did. I thought it was a great idea, but. It just, it didn't work. And if there's, if people are going to be that upset that. The decision is made tonight or tomorrow or next week or whatever about this. I just feel like everybody's had ample opportunity to be part of the solution. And at the end of the day, it comes down to liability. Which is my concern.
A piece of doing this is to. Take the heat, take the pressure, take it. If using. That structure and I'm not even comfortable using the word structure, but if, if using that structure. Is not an option going forward. Then it should not, it just can't be a part of the discussion tomorrow night. It's, it's not an option. That was part of the impetus I'm bringing this up now is if it's, if it's not an option. Then it shouldn't be an option.
And, and maybe that's just what. You three go into the meeting tomorrow to say, you know, even wherever, you know, even if this vote doesn't take place. Is that right now, the town of Buckfield does not. See a future in that building and would like to have it removed. For safety reasons and liability reasons and. Sort of one of those like, we're letting you know.
Because ultimately it is a town of Buckfield decision. It is not a solid waste committee. Certainly. We value the town's input. But there's been six months for input on making that structure safe and I have not. Been able to get one report. Saying, sure, we can make this a safe, public space. And the mold piece with people talking about, oh, mold, this could make me sick or I might be sick or. We can't take any chances.
We don't mess with that.
With the town, yeah, with the town's money.
Right, so we'll move the motion. All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azelia, aye.
Peter, aye.
Sandra, aye.
Any other, other business?
I do just want to ask a clarifying question. You don't anticipate. This is something that would be done.
No.
Internet, right?
No, I can barely keep up with what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Public comment, we don't have anybody online, right?
No, nobody came in.
I will mention that I went to the. RSU ten withdrawal meeting. That was a. It was a good meeting, well attended. I'd say fifty people anyway, lots of good questions. Some really good back and forth and the committee members did a really good job of explaining their points of view on it. Yeah, we'll see how it goes, but yep, very good meeting, lots of. Lots of back and forth.
Maybe you could clarify, so the Warren article for the RSU ten withdrawal. Is to begin the research. Process.
Right.
This does not commit.
Correct.
Town.
It's the first step in the process. So everybody thinks, oh, if we vote that we're going to withdraw, that's it, we're done. We're gonna have to. So if we find out it's going to be three million dollars more, we're gonna have, we're, we're stuck with it. That, that's not how the process works. There's twenty-two steps.
Yeah.
This is the first, well, the petition was the first step, but this is like step one point two. And it's really so that the community, the three communities, if they all vote in favor can. Dig into it and get accurate. Information and develop an accurate plan, not a, it might look like this, it might look like this. You know, and if, if that all, if it all goes through that process and it all. Just doesn't make sense, I'm, it still may not happen. It may not get approval from the state, you know, so this isn't a.
This doesn't lock anybody into anything.
We can stop anytime.
And the only, the only thing I will say is if, if the three communities. Are wondering what it would look like, th- this is the only way that we can really know what it's going to look like because. Putting together these ad hoc committees and, you know, pulling numbers from one school district and another school district, it's all guesses. It's all.
They did phenomenal.
Yeah, no, they did. They did, the spreadsheets are crazy.
Right, above and beyond.
But they can only do so much and.
This gives access to information.
And to the, for the ability to actually. Design what a withdrawal would look like.
Yeah, I believe all that information is online too, right?
Yeah, and it's on our website now that I fixed it.
Yep.
I don't know what I did.
Is it like under a committee or?
Yeah, under the committees, if you go to the education ad hoc committee, it's got the publicly shareable. Links, so it's got all the documents that they used. It's got the ED two seventy-nine they got from the state, the spreadsheets that they put together to come up with their numbers. It's got a ton of stuff in there. But. Again, it's all, it's, it's all a guess. It's, it's a best guess, you know what I mean? You use people who have experience in that field and, you know. Utilizing information from our current, current administration and then from other school districts to kind of come up with an idea of what it would look like, but. Nobody really knows until they actually look at what it would look like.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's what I thought that one.
Yeah. And I'm gonna send an email to. Neil and let him know that that public hearing is on that date so that hopefully he can be there too to answer some of those questions because. He seemed to do a pretty good job that day.
Yeah.
That would be great.
And anyone else from.
Yeah, and anybody else from the committee, if we have. We have to, we'll go have the party up front, I guess, we have a speaker.
All right, any other? All right, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven thirty-five PM. All in favor? Thank you.